Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Second. I second. Please vote. Man, already. Okay, so now we're on to our one and only item. So this is about the allocation of facilities for charter schools under Prop 39. We've got two speakers who were signed up, so why don't we go to speakers first? So we've got Lisa Berlanga and Christine Kuglin.
All right. Thank you, President Barrera. So Lisa Berlanga, California Charter School Association, and I want to start out by saying thank you to Roy and his staff for the preliminary offers. I know he's put a lot of work and effort into these. This is very timely this year, more so than in any year prior. There's positive recommendations in there. There's some thought given to a shared use agreement beforehand because sharing sites is very difficult. The $2.75 fee is still in there for additional space if it's available, and that fee has remained consistent, and we appreciate that. We do hope that sharing sites will be considered carefully. As Roy states in the document, it's a great challenge to share sites for both the traditional district school and the charter school. So it's something that needs to be handled very carefully, and I know that district schools are not excited to have charter schools joining their campus. So it's something that is really difficult, and of course, we're willing to help in any way we can with that. Again, this is very proactive, though. The preliminary offers don't have classrooms spread all across campuses, so people aren't freaking out, so it's all good. We would also ask, there's been some discussion since Prop 39 process last year about some administrative facilities that are actually mostly adults, mostly adult programs. Some kids come once in a while, and although I know those can't be offered as formal Prop 39, we hope that for the charter schools interested that those will be considered as part of the negotiation process that will now begin. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Lisa.
Thank you to all the board members for hearing me out tonight. My name's Christine Kuglin. I'm the director, one of the founders of Innovations Academy, and the mother to three in district students. I want to thank Roy as well. I've talked with Roy all the time, and he's been very helpful with information and guiding us through the process. This is our second year applying for Prop 39 facilities. Initially, Innovations Academy never intended to use a district facility, but we have been around, this is our third year, we've been in three different facilities in three different parts of the city, and so facilities have been a big challenge. We are forced to locate in buildings that have a proper zoning and permitting, otherwise we would have to spend tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars getting the building up to code. So that limits our facility availability to just a handful in the city. For Prop 39, I just wanted to mention, just as Lisa did, that last year we met with the superintendent and that it be recognized that in San Diego Unified School District, we have students who are located in commercial buildings such as ours who have zero outdoor play space. At the same time, we have adults located on school facilities that were built by taxpayer money for children that have playgrounds. And the school district also has empty classroom space in many of the schools where those administrators could be located and be closer to their constituents, which are ultimately the students. So I would just like that to be considered for Innovations Academy outside of Prop 39 or however it can be done, because we urgently need, for a few years anyway, to have a facility that's adequate for our students so they have places to play and learn decently. Ultimately, we intend to build our own site and move out of a district site, but in the interim, we would like to be able to use that space. So I appreciate you hearing me out, and good luck.
Yes, Christine. Okay, great. So Superintendent, do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you, President Barrera. What I've asked is for Roy to provide you with a set of circumstances of first reading today, and for our two new board trustees to provide a little background. Because Prop 39 offers are very prescriptive, they are by law certain milestones that we march our way through, and something that we've had to come to grips with, a trend that we've seen happening now for a number of years is that there are demands for facilities with no straight, easy solution, and we find ourselves caught up in shared propositions. I know those are challenging. We also did, as was brought up, a review of administrative sites, which I think Roy can bring up tonight, for which there's a full report for you. There are trade-offs, and I'd like to have Roy first start by walking through the milestones and then tell you where the offers are, because this is only the first public discussion of a cycle that goes all the way to the first of April. And so without further ado, Roy.
President Barrera, members of the board, as Bill said, I'd like to just give you a little outline of what Proposition 39 is all about and summarize the items in this first reading of the preliminary proposals we're making under Proposition 39. Proposition 39 was approved by the voters back in 1998, and it permits charter schools to make applications to the district for space on our facilities. The states publish regulations on the process, including a very tight timeline that both the district and charter schools must adhere to. And also, education code states that the district must make offers of space to charters that submit a compliant application for the in-district student ADA. The assumption is that if these students did not attend a charter school, the district would be housing them somehow. Preliminary proposals for offering space to charter schools must be made by February the first. And please note, as the name suggests, these are preliminary offers. When they're issued by the board, it marks the beginning of a period of dialogue between the district and charter schools. To refine the preliminary proposals, maybe come up with slightly different offers, obviously involve the district schools that will be affected by this as well. And the other part of the timeline is charter schools must express their concerns about the preliminary offers by March the first, then by April the first, the district must make final offers, and then by May the first, charter schools must indicate whether they accept the offer. This year, 10 charter schools made applications for the use of district facilities under Proposition 39 for 2011, 2012. Only one of these, which is King Chavez Academy of Excellence, is currently located on district facilities. We also have 14 other charter schools, which are housed in standalone district facilities, and they've executed multi-year agreements with the district. These are non-Prop 39 agreements that the board asked us to work on in years past. So to summarize the report before you, and there's also a table on the screen, there are not any standalone district sites available right now, so the district is proposing in all instances the sharing of campuses with district-run schools. A number of the charter schools requesting space this year, or for next year, are quite large schools with significant space requirements, such as KIPP and Health Sciences. And there's very few locations in the district where we have a sufficient number of classroom space at a single site to offer, and that's another requirement of the regulations, that they really don't want you to offer six classrooms to KIPP at one site and another 10 at another. They want you to make contiguous offers. So the district did attempt to find locations where these larger charter schools requested to be, and also to find locations with similar grade levels served, but it's not possible to meet all these requirements at once. District staff have also met with the area superintendents of district schools where the co-locations are being proposed, and will also be meeting with the affected principals. Obviously, as Lisa said, there's obviously concern about the issue of co-locations of two schools on one campus, as it will require the sharing of space and a degree of flexibility by both schools to come to arrangements to make that sharing successful. These conversations will continue as the Prop 39 process moves on. As the table shows above, the district is proposing preliminary proposals of facility space to 10 charter schools, and they're listed on the table. I can read them out, or you can just look at the table. We have Arroyo Paseo at the Mann site, Health Sciences at the Wilson site, Holly Drive at Penn, Ifton High School, not the K-8 school, which is already at Jackson Elementary School, Ifton High School at Clark, Innovations at Miller, King Chavez Excellence would remain at Memorial, KIPP Adelante at Bell, Nubia at Webster, San Diego Co-op, they're starting a second branch of their charter schools that will remain at their Linda Vista site, but they've made a new application, and we're proposing the Adams site, and San Diego Global Vision at the Normal Heights site. As mentioned by the speakers today and by the superintendent, district staff did perform an analysis of former school sites occupied by administrative functions last fall with a view to examining the feasibility of relocating staff and offering the sites to charter schools. Following the analysis of Prop 39 applications, the draft study has now been revised, and at the direction of Superintendent, we will be presenting that to the board in February. Once again, just to conclude, please note, first of all, this is a first reading, and that these are preliminary proposals. The next step after preliminary proposals are offered is to work with charter schools to refine the proposals, respond to their concerns, and also those of the district schools, and then to return with final proposals to the board by April the first. In order to begin all those steps, as mentioned, we'll need the board's authorization to present these preliminary proposals with your affirmative vote at the January 25 meeting in order to remain in compliance with state regulations. And that's my presentation, and if anyone has any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Let me, before we go to the trustees, just to add a little bit of concluding comments, at least in this first go-around for the board. Just an observation, reminder for prior board members, but for the new board members, we only have two shared campuses in the district today where there are co-located charter and public district brick-and-mortar schools. Those happen to be at the Gompers Campus, where the Gompers Preparatory Academy and Millennial Tech are located, and have been there for a couple of years now, and at the Memorial Middle School site, where you have our own Memorial Academy as well as King Chavez. We have been going in this direction for a period of time, and by that I mean over the last few years, as the number of charter schools has grown, and there are particular challenges with operating in a private commercial real estate or a private sectarian state, the cost of operations. For them, their realities are having to look to district property more often and in larger numbers. At the same time, there is clearly a degree of imbalance. Not all the need is in any one particular part of the district. The propensity of the charter school presence and their students are in limited areas of the district. So, I mean, that's an obvious, but I think it's worth stating, because we don't impact the whole district per se, a particular segment of it. What Roy also pointed out, which is critical, we try to link where the students are, their geography, their location, where there is capacity, and it's not easy. There have been instances in the past where the students may be in Section A, but their best capacity is in Section B, or variation on that. So that's another issue of why these are not always straightforward. I think, lastly, is the size of the need. If it was only a half a dozen classrooms and we had four options, we're near the kids and the capacity meets, that's great. We can talk. But often, the capacity and the proximity and the general need all don't come together in a straightforward way. So this is where we are. Today, we have, of these 10 proposals, a significant number are in just a couple of clusters of the district, but that's just where we are.
Yes. I think Mr. Beiser is first. Go ahead, Tim.
How did we arrive at the rent per square foot? Is that in Prop 39, or is that just a number that, where does that number come from?
The figure referred to by Ms. Berlanga is a figure that was derived four or five years ago for space, if it exists, to offer to a charter school above and beyond what we're obliged to offer through Prop 39. And I think it was done, as I said, four or five years ago, based on looking at, I think, some real estate information about just a much lower market rent rate than we could possibly offer. I don't really remember the entire reason.
What's the rate? I think I read-
It's $2.75 a square foot per year, which is what we offer for additional space. In the private market, you're probably paying a dollar a square foot a month, so it's much, much higher.
Yeah, I thought I saw something-
So it's a very nominal fee that we have kept stable for four or five years.
I thought I read in the document that the regular classroom was like a dollar a square foot per year?
The method we used to use to charge for Prop 39 until last year was called a pro-rata method, which worked out to be a dollar a square foot a year. We had to move to another version of charging, which is based on the revenues of the charter school, but it used to be a dollar a square foot a year.
And what is it currently? Not the excess, but the classroom?
The dollar a square foot a year is what we would off, we used to offer for the Prop 39 allocation of space. If we were able to, if it was available and charter schools wanted additional space that was available, we would charge that higher rate of the $2.75 per square foot per year.
How does that compare to-
That was outside of Prop 39.
How does that compare to market rates?
It's much, much higher. If you look at the, some of the rental agreements that charters have with private facilities, it's more like a dollar a square foot a month, so it's like 12 times higher than we were charging under the old method of Prop 39.
Wow, okay, thanks.
On this list that we have here, are these all proposals for sharing?
Every single one is a sharing arrangement.
There's not, one of these is an empty school site?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that the difficulty you have is, well, for everybody involved, is with the budget cuts and not knowing how it's going to come down in terms of issues like transportation, and then how that may or may not move people back to their neighborhood schools and so forth, it seems like it makes it really difficult, because, I mean, I have no idea if, say, Wilson or Bell or any other school, really, if there's a major change in transportation and their enrollment is going to go up significantly next year, and yet we're in this position right now where we're required to negotiate with the charter schools for space, then it seems like what could happen is you could make an agreement to put the charter school in this space, and then next year, we would want to put the local neighborhood kids in the school, and it wouldn't be available, and what would we do at that point?
It is, you're right, there are a number of unresolved issues for our district to consider, one being class sizes, and that would affect the capacity calculations. There's also the issue of transportation. You know, these are unresolved right issues right now, so it's impossible for us to anticipate how those proposals will finally pan out and how they would affect these offers. But, I mean, you're absolutely right, that if significant changes are made to how we operate as a district, it could mean the return of district students to some of the schools that we're offering space for.
So if we had made an agreement with the charter school, does that mean we would have to turn the district students away?
I might need to turn to Andrea.
It's difficult on both sides, because there could also be a school that is going to turn out to have available space the charter schools don't know about now either.
If we were to return students from School A to School B, then suddenly, School A may have the space. If we've made final offers and they've been accepted, the degree to which they're binding, I would probably have to defer to our legal counsel, and at this point, they're preliminary. If we make these decisions between now and April the first, it would certainly help us modify the preliminary proposals.
Okay, so between now and April 1st, if it could, you would be able to say, okay, here's the proposed transportation plan, and then you could kind of look at the numbers and see where students were going to go, and then based on that, you'd still have a chance to modify, add, or withdraw proposals within at least that time period?
I think that's possible.
Okay.
Andrea, could you comment on that?
Sure. There's really no legal precedence in the regulations for a situation where transportation or other factors drastically change the configuration of a district school or a charter school for that matter. So we're operating on the premise that we're making good faith preliminary offers and moving forward with negotiations, with the understanding that we may need to have some flexibility within the period of time during the negotiation, and that we would be open and forthcoming with the charter schools about that process. But once we get to the April 1st deadline, it's really unclear what options we would have if we'd made agreements.
But just to clarify this point a little bit more, if we on the 25th approve these preliminary offers and we send these preliminary offers out, those at that point are offers, are they not?
That's correct.
So it's, I mean, there'd be negotiation, but conceivably, the charter could, school could say, I accept.
Well, there's, sorry, there's not really a final, I mean, it's not final until May. So it contemplates that they could come back in April and say, yeah, that sounds great, but the process won't end until May, I'm sorry, they could come back in March, and then by April, we would finalize that. So there's some room for discussion in there, but I think that we should be very clear about where it is we think that we're going, so that we are open and transparent about our intent.
The point that I hear Dr. Evans making is, if we make an offer for space, and then, you know, in the next few months, we determine, wow, we actually need that space for students who might be, you know, coming back to their neighborhood school, the fact that we've made the offer, we can't retract the offer, can we? I mean, I understand we negotiated, and I understand that they haven't accepted it, but can we say, we're offering you this space, you know, whatever, and then say, you know, a little bit later, actually, we're not offering you that space anymore?
Well, again, there's no legal precedence for the situation whatsoever, but my take on it is that we have to treat all of the students equally, and so we can't look, on the one hand, at our students' needs coming back versus the needs of the students that are already placed there.
Jackson.
I thank the staff, and I'm sure there was a lot of work put into this, but I do have some concerns, and I know that we're in the preliminary stage of looking at all this. I understand also that a lot of the charter schools happen to reside in District E, so therefore, it's a little of a burden on District E. However, I'm not sure if the information that the staff is receiving is totally correct, because in looking at some of these assignments, some of these schools, these schools are nowhere near where the people are residing at right now. And I'll just pull up two examples. Holly Drive, even though I know that this year they kind of spread around, their location is right there near Euclid and Imperial. That's where they, you know, pretty much reside. But in this offer, you're sending them all the way out to Penn, which is all the way down south, a lot further south. Nubia, which is a lot further south than Holly Drive, you're sending them opposite, you're sending them north. Okay, so it doesn't give the appearance, you know, that we are being fair in our offer, because it would seem like what you would offer, if you were, if the district was being fair and open and transparent, is that we would say, since Holly Drive is closer to Webster, we would offer them Webster, and since Nubia is closer to Penn, we would offer them Penn. However, that is not the case, and I'm curious as to how the staff decided, because they both have the same amount of classrooms, it's both six classrooms for each of the schools, so I'm very curious as to what information was provided to the staff. I mean, I know where the schools actually are, but what was the staff given that would make them think that this would be the best option for those schools? So that's question number one. Question number two was about the location of high schools on middle school campuses. I have a grave concern about locating high schools on middle school campuses. I think that if we can accommodate, we talk about having, you know, equal access to the students, we talk about being, you know, if it's going to be competitive, then you put like students on like campuses. And so to, you know, I'll just talk about the one you're going to put on Mann. I know that Mann and Crawford, Crawford has not been able to capture a lot of Mann students for various reasons, and now you're going to add another charter school, a 9th through 12 charter school on their campus. It's essentially almost squeezing the life out of Crawford High School, because if someone is there every day that has access to those students, then what are they going to do? By the end of the school, they're going to convince them, you don't have to go across the street to get, we can meet your needs right here. So I have a grave concern at you placing, you know, placing the high schools at middle schools, number one, but then I'm concerned at the conversation that went over the area of soup when you did this. Okay, and then lastly, I'm concerned about our work that's going on at the school sites. Some of the school sites will have construction going on over the next year or so. So if they have construction and they need to move students to their classrooms to accommodate the work going on on the campus, how would that be affected? Or are you going to now say that you cannot have your required work done because you can't, you know, find the students, or do we have to bring on bungalows to accommodate the students there in order to get that work done?
Right. In terms of the first question, the way you analyze ideally where to locate schools is you look at their distribution, and we have the distribution, first of all, by cluster. That's the first level of analysis, and obviously, both those schools you were talking about are within the Lincoln-Mars area. Then you look at the schools where they're, the elementary schools where the students are located, and I think when we did that, we saw a slight concentration one way versus the other for those schools. When you look at how many are located in the Encanto boundary or the Webster boundary, I think that's how we did it. I will review that, and I can get that to you. These are preliminary, we can look into flipping them if the schools are interested in receiving these offers as well.
Yes, because you'll find out that Nubia is a lot further south.
The school itself is, you're right about the location, but the distribution of the students is a little bit different, but I can get that to you.
Roy, that's a good question. I understand where trustee Jackson's coming from, knowing where those schools are, but I think what you need to validate is, where's the core of the kids coming from that would fill this? What you're saying, while Penn is way south in the district, the kids that supposedly are going to be drawn for Holly Drive are down there by Penn.
There might be a few more that way. We have the distribution by individual elementary school, and, you know, we have only so many schools that have enough space to accommodate them. So if we have, you know, one school taken care of because the concentration is, for example, closer to Webster, then we have to find another place for Holly Drive. If we only have another school with six or seven spaces available, we might have no choice but to go as far down as Penn. But I can give you the distributions that we found. Regarding the high school and the middle school co-location, absolutely, it's a problem. However, we have no room at our high schools to put charter high schools. Crawford High School is pretty full. I think we wouldn't want to put, I think, one charter school with four small high schools. I think that would be challenging. That's why we didn't go there. We've had experience in the past of locating three entities on one campus, and I think most people felt that was not a successful model. That was one reason I didn't look at placing Arroyo Paseo at Crawford High School. The grades would have aligned, but I think having multiple entities would have been very, very challenging. So when you don't have high schools to go to, the only level we have after that, at the secondary level, is of course, middle schools, and we must make an offer. But you're right, that the grade mismatch is a problem, but we couldn't offer any space at the high school level in that specific case. In fact, Hoover is full, Crawford's got multiple entities on it, and then where do you go after that? The concentration of Arroyo Paseo students was in the Crawford cluster, so that's why we stayed there. Regarding construction, that is obviously a valid concern. I did check up on Mann Middle School's whole site renovation, and the project manager said that's going to begin the third quarter of 2013, and would last three years. And while all that significant construction is going on, Prop S would accommodate any students who are on the campus, whether it's 139 Arroyo Paseo students or the 800-plus Mann students. So in terms of, it's not ideal, but while that construction is going on, they would be able to accommodate the charter school students as well as the Mann students if that's the final offer that is made. Prop 39 is an annual process. You do not want to have to move schools every other year, but there is space at Mann, there's, there could be space for up to five years from now. could be space for up to five years from now, there would be construction, which would be hard, but we can see, at least for the foreseeable future, space for Arroyo Paseo. If enrollments change, and this is why it's an annual process, if Mann starts to grow dramatically, if Arroyo Paseo starts to grow dramatically, every year when we get an application, we can say, "There's no more room for you, we're going to have to find another location." So, we did check into the case of Mann and their construction schedule.
Just to also reiterate, I think we have three dynamics that could affect possible space availability in next school year. Obviously, there is the transportation element in itself, which has been discussed. There's also, we're going to be coming back with looking at, quote, "small schools," unquote, and whether or not we want to continue to subsidize them and to what level or not, and that could affect additional space. And not, even though I know, I understand Mr. McPhail has looked at the administrative sites, I guess, we haven't looked at them yet, and there is, I think, some discussion worth merit, whether it's regarding charter schools or not, of consolidating some of the satellite administrative sites to even this building, potentially, and that could free up some space as well. So, I think all those three issues could affect available space. On the specific issue, I think it would be helpful for me and maybe help some of the issues that Ms. Jackson and others have raised, if we had a site plan map basically showing, unless it's in here somewhere.
In the appendices to the report, there are site plan maps.
No, I meant not each individual campus, I'm sorry, but a district site map showing where the charter schools are located now and where they are proposed to go, so we could at least from an aerial view, see the geographic changes of where the schools are going, and then, of course, some relation to that of where the students are currently going from those charter schools, vis a vis that location, would be helpful as well. The other question, thing that would be helpful, even though we're not talking about making any real money here on rent, I think it would still be helpful to break down on a chart what the anticipated rent or other fees would be for each charter school site based on the proposed agreements. Then, there was one thing that, and maybe you can clarify it, if not now, when you come back with that breakdown, there's, you discuss the dollar a square foot, you discuss the 2.75 a square foot, and then, once again, these are a year, not a month, for additional uses, but then, in the boilerplate letter that you have sent to each school, which I realize is just boilerplate language, it talks about the oversight charge, and is that, in addition, is that considered a maintenance fee? And you talk, and there's two bullets. One says, "No, shall not exceed 3% of the revenue of the charter school,"
Right.
Which assumes that we audit those annually, and then, the bullet right under it says, "Well, we're not going to be charging this." So, will we be charging this, and could that be put into the whole?
I need to check the second bullet on that, because the intention is to charge up to the 3% level. Every charter school is assessed a 1% oversight fee to cover our oversight of the charter schools. Then, if you're offering facilities substantially rent-free, which is what we're doing, you're allowed to charge up to an additional 2% of their revenues, and that's the model we're following. We used to do what was called the prorata share method, which was the dollar a square foot, depending on how much square foot they were assigned, but we actually can't do that method anymore, because it's going to get technical, because we could only do that when maintenance money was coming from the general fund, and that's not the case anymore. So, we've gone to Plan B, which is the revenue method. So, I'll check that second bullet, it should not suggest we're not going that way.
So, then, and then, maybe whatever revenues for each site you're anticipating to include in that matrix as well. One last policy question. I'm assuming, since, once again, these are preliminary offers now, and it says, if the language is in here is consistent with the language in the law, then it says we make a final offer on, is it March 1st?
April 1st.
March 1st. April?
April 1st.
I'm sorry.
Final offers are April 1st.
Yes. Okay, then, yeah, that's, then...
We make our preliminary by February 1st. The charter has to respond with any concerns, by March 1st. We make our final on April 1st.
Well, if the language is that nebulous, it sounds like we could make another offer when we have more data, if we make, if the needs are met. There's also, I assume, we could mutually agree to say, "Well, this is what we think we want to offer you now, but there may be other opportunities, which they may prefer to sharing a site if other opportunities arise, and we may prefer to them sharing a site as well." So, I think we need to be clear, if the law's not clear, at least what we believe our options are on April 1st. If we offer a preliminary site today, if we can then, based on the discussion we're going to have in the next 60 days, come back and say, "Well, this site's come open, this site, or, and therefore, we want to change it," do we have that flexibility, or do we believe today we do, unless we're told by a judge we don't? Is that kind of what you're saying?
No. Our recommendation is that we be as open as possible in the preliminary offer about the contemplation of alternatives and keep that discussion going. We don't recommend that we change completely between the February 1st and the April 1st. Certainly, there is some contemplation that there would be a change based on the discussions with the charter schools, so it allows for that conversation, but we don't, I don't recommend that we wait until April to make a completely different offer and then reopen the discussion about a different facility.
Okay, what if we do not make an offer based by February 1st?
Then, we're in violation of the regulations.
And then, what happens?
Then, the charter schools will argue that we're in violation of the regulations.
Okay, and then, what happens?
That would be up to them.
Okay, so, okay, so, we don't know. They're still going to want space at the district, and we're still going to want to work with them, so we're being asked to make a decision today based on a deadline without a lot of the data that we don't even have, based on some major policy decisions we haven't made, and also, based on maybe some additional data based on the analysis that Mr. McPhail's done. Seems to be a common quandary we've been putting.
You're right. There is no synchronization here, just because the legislation was put together over a period of years. You have a March 15th deadline dealing with staffing and finances, you have a property deadline that walks past that into 1 May, and in the particular environment we're in now with the great uncertainty associated with the budget only adds to the issue of, are these capacities that will hold today, or in April, or in June? I think a couple of points we heard clearly was, one, you know, let's take a look at, when we have maps of the district with the charter schools highlighted on them, and we can link them, it's very easy, I think, for us to link them to where the student population is we're drawing to, because capacity and location of the population is something that needs to be factored in. In years past, you may start out with certain offers, they do evolve over a period of time. Sometimes, either it's a new offer, or the offer just dries up, because either the charter school or the district have come to some decision about what's possible in a given year. We have the administrative report, this is what we did, and Roy is going to be delivering that to you. We'll make that happen, I think, tomorrow at the latest. What you're going to see in that report is that we looked at, Roy, was it six, seven?
Seven, I think.
Seven different sites, and it was clear that a number of these administrative sites probably are not doable for all the reasons that you'll see in the report. They include the Ballard Center, the old former Fremont Elementary School, which today houses a mix of activities, including the parent university, I High, and a number of other functions, but you'll can see that in the report. The Revere Center is a place of a half a dozen operations. I mean, we're flexible, we'll work with the community and with the board. We have to remember the trade-off costs. There are a couple of Marcy sites brought out, which today do house special education kids. They do have adults on them, but there are different reasons why you wouldn't free them up, because there are always trade-off costs between what the district's needs are and what the charter school needs are. So, we've done that, we'll make that report available. That would be information that will be vital to decisions here. The great challenge is, is the number of schools, the capacities, and where the kids are. And we just got to be able to sort our way around those items, knowing full well, we're working with a disconnected timeline.
I have three questions. First of all, and I realize it's very little money, as Mr. Burnett pointed out, in terms of the rent, and I assume that money just goes into the general fund, the rent from charter schools?
I don't know. I...
If it's an excess facility, I'm sorry.
No, we're talking, you're talking narrowly about the rent costs that are paid from the charter schools on district property.
Right.
Yes.
First of all, we don't really charge rent, they're substantially rent-free, that's the technicality.
I would think this is the 1%, 3% issue, I think Dr. Evans was, but maybe to clarify.
We do charge the additional 2%, that's the proposal. I don't know the color of money where that goes. That would be a finance person's question.
I mean, just a thought I had about that in terms of sharing facilities, in terms of, if some of that money were used for the facility, for the school that they're, the traditional school that they're sharing with, if some of that went to that school, I wonder if it would make it a more amenable arrangement, you know? And I know, realize, we need money everywhere, I know it's not a lot of money, but that money may make a difference. If the local traditional school knew that through that money, they could do something extra, hire one additional teacher, or something like that, that might affect their view of having that school coming in. That's just a thought. The other question, since we're looking at these timelines from this week until next week, and I realize you're still working on developing the budget, and there's a long ways to go, but I would hope that you would have some preliminary ideas about what you're thinking about in terms of moving and transportation and so forth, and that the staff would look at these proposals here and say, "Well, if we go anywhere near what we're looking at in terms of transportation changes, this one is not going to work, because there are going to be a lot of students coming back to the home school." And I realize there are a lot of steps, because that has to be presented, and it has to go through process with the board over a long period of time, but again, if that's the administration's inclination, I think we should at least make some, in both directions. I mean, in terms of that that space might not be available, but also, that there may be another space that is available, too, that could open up. And then, the third point had to do with what Ms. Jackson was talking about in terms of co-locating the high schools with the middle schools, and I understand that you're trying to locate the schools near where, the charter schools near where the students are living, however, my understanding is that they can attend a charter school from anywhere in the district, and I don't know what the rules are in terms of how close it has to be to where the students live. So, Mike, I know you've given us a lot of great charts that I've looked at before, but specifically, which are the high school campuses that are currently underutilized?
I think we only have maybe a couple of those at the moment, which would be Lincoln and Morse, off the top of my head. They have some space available, if we're talking about where charter, the bulk of charter school students are located. Hoover has no space. I mentioned the Crawford example.
I'm talking about in the entire district, which schools are underutilized, facilities are underutilized.
Our high schools are fairly well utilized. I'd have to check, but I don't think we've got a huge amount of space in the other high schools, but I will, I can confirm that for you.
I did have the impression, but you're saying that those two high schools do have some space?
Yes.
And yet, the proposal is to put them, these charter high schools with a middle school rather than with a high school?
Well, I mean, there's competing criteria here, which is why I said in my little presentation that there, the rules talk about, the regulations talk about, try to locate where the students are located. It's not a, you must locate where the students are located. Our first thing is, we must find a home for them, but we do try to look at where the students are located, and in the case of Arroyo Paseo, the overwhelming bulk of the students were in the Crawford cluster. So, we thought, in that case, keep them in the Crawford cluster. We could have, as we had to do with KIP, the bulk of students are located in San Diego High School area. There's no room at Roosevelt. As I mentioned, we've tried before with three entities on the Memorial site. I didn't honestly think that was a good proposal to make. Then, you look, where's the next high school, next secondary school where we have space available? And unfortunately, we're out to Bell by the time we get there.
How did you look, Roy?
Yes.
Right, and so, I don't know what...
Again, where is the bulk of their students?
I don't know what the answer is, but I guess there is a values issue, a priority issue, as far as whether where the students are living is the main consideration, or whether...
It's a consideration.
Having them age group together is, takes priority, and that doesn't sound like...
I don't think one is...
It's absolutely laid out in the law, which way it is, and so, I'm just saying, that is another consideration, and I, it could be a worse idea, I don't know, I just wanted to bring it up.
Neither, as you, you're quite right, the regulations don't say, "Consider grade, like grade locations before geographic location." It's not, it's not specified which way to go.
Right.
Roy, just a couple of things. So, the, I mean, one issue that we, you know, we obviously identify is, there are concerns that the district has about offering up administrative sites. However, we all have a concern about co-locating charter schools with district schools. I guess the, so, the staff has made a choice in terms of the list of preliminary sites that, so, there's, there are no schools currently being offered any administrative sites. All of the schools are being...
Correct.
...co-located. And we've got on the 25th to approve, you know, the preliminary offers. I think there would be a preference, my guess is, with my colleagues, that on the 25th, we would have alternative options, you know, brought to us to look at, so that, you know, the possibility of offering administrative sites to, you know, to some or all of these, you know, would be considered, so that we could actually make that choice. Because I, I understand the thinking that, you know, we make a preliminary offer that starts negotiation, very likely, schools are going to come and say, "Well, what about the administrative site?" And, you know, it's not closed off, but the preliminary offer is a preliminary offer, and it's, it's not something that I think, I mean, and certainly, you're not at all suggesting this, but it's not something that we dismiss and say, "It doesn't really matter what we put in our preliminary offer." So, I think, I guess my preference would be, when we come back on the 25th, that, you know, that there's, despite the problems associated with it, that we look at some alternative, you know, administrative sites, you know, to consider alongside the potential of co-location. So, that would be one issue. And then, the second would be that, given our budget process and that, you know, we're going to go several months, we know, before, certainly, we've got a final budget and before, in some cases, we've made decisions about transportation and small schools and the rest. We make a final offer on April 1st, but after April 1st, could we come back and say, "Well, we want to give you an alternative offer now," because, guess what? There's space that's just opened up as a result of budget decisions that we've made that we hadn't, had available to us to offer to you, but now is available to us to offer to you, and we want to, we want to put it out there. Is that something that's possible?
I think there's always room for discussion.
Yeah.
It would depend on the space, but I think there's always room to have that conversation.
Yeah.
In addition to having the conversations about administrative space, some of them maybe need to offer outside the Prop 39 offer due to the fact that they're not configured as classroom space.
Yeah, okay. And then, the superintendent, Superintendent Kobo, when you present your proposed budget to us, and I think we're looking at early February, that will obviously include, you know, some proposed choices about transportation. Will we be able at that point, I guess, Phil, I'm asking you, will we be able at that point to... to say, you know, to identify where the students who are, in a sense, losing transportation, you know, where their home school is?
Yes. We can identify where their home school is.
Yeah.
What would be a challenge would be to predict how many of the students who lose transportation will choose to go
Right.
To the school on their own.
Yeah.
We know, the majority of them do now.
Yeah.
And then what their alternative would be, where they would go back to if they chose not to.
Right. But at least it would give us a little bit more of a picture of, you know, the potential of students, you know, returning to their home school.
Yes. We can do that.
Okay. But yeah, I would, I would probably push not, you know, I don't know if my colleagues agree with me, that on the 25th, we have some alternatives that we could, you know, present as offers that include some administrative space.
Fine.
Can I ask one more comment? Could we also, there is no co-location with any of the charter schools. The charter schools, I know the enrollment at O'Farrell is down, the enrollment at Keeler is down, and I don't see any, so if you're talking about the ones you want to put at Bell, you know, I mean, I totally agree, we don't want to go back to having anything with Memorial, but O'Farrell's a lot closer to that group of people than Bell is, okay? And so I don't see any, you know, we have given campuses to charters, and they don't have to co-locate. So it's, you know, the public schools we have to co-locate, but a charter school doesn't? It's
Well, one of the issues that will preclude us from doing that is that the charter schools that you're referring to, they're the ones that have those multi-year agreements, and they have agreements for up to the life of their charter, and they have the site, and those agreements are in effect, so they'd have to be rescinded in some way to free that up.
Let's talk about that, because it doesn't make sense to have a school that is half-occupied by a charter, and then we're going to co-locate and try to pack our campuses to the guild for students, and the charter school's only half-full.
Okay. Any more, yeah, Dr.
That sounds very complicated with the legalities on the one hand, but on the other hand, I think that's a useful piece of information, if there are charter school campuses out there that are only half utilizing what the district has given them.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, thank you, Roy.
Do you read?
I don't need it.